Approximately 6:45 on December 20, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I'm going to note for the record, I am conducting this, sorry, this meeting is being held, offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Seeing that, I note for the record, participating in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance for those willing. Please stand and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, but I think we're going to hold the minutes for our next meeting. Okay. Then we'll move to Agenda Item 4. It's to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to WM Brewing Company Incorporated for the New Year's Bonfire to be held on Saturday, January 7, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, January 8, 2023, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I think Ann Smith White is going to present on behalf of the applicant this morning. Do we see Ann on the call?
Not yet.
I do not see her. All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to just hold this item in abeyance. We'll move to Item 5, which is to consider the approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for a night of music with Chelsea Berry and Matt Cusson to be held at Ames Chapel on January 7, 2023, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I believe John Davenport is going to present for the applicant. And we are 0-for-2 on the one days. All right. So we're not going to delay the meeting, so we'll move to the budget, the FY24 Department Budget Request. The first item under this Agenda item is Public Works, Transfer Station, and Sewer. We have Randy Sylvester with us. Randy, come on up here, and welcome to join us. Good evening to you, Randy. Good to see you.
Nice seeing you. Go ahead.
You may proceed.
So the Public Works has six divisions: engineering, fleet maintenance, highway, sewer, transfer station, and tree and park. That makes up the DPW. Some of the benchmarks and metrics that we have, we have 140 miles of public roads, 100 miles of drain lines, 60 miles of sidewalks, over 10,000 drainage structures, over 10,000 public shade trees. We do, and this is down in recent years, but our average plantings per year were about 80. We do about 380 removals a year. In 2021, that was much more since the storm. And we do about 3,300 prunings. We have 80 pieces of snow removal equipment, 3,100 traffic and street signs, and five sets of signals that we take care of. The transfer station, that's operating four days a week, and we get over 8,000. It's more like 9,000 today. It does fluctuate, but it's 85, 9,000 vehicles a week, which is up. And as far as the sewer system, we have 13 different pump stations throughout Weir River that has one, and then North Sewer District, which is the downtown area in that part of Hingham, that has 12. Our key initiatives as a DPW is the road construction program and utility coordination. And what I mean by that is we get ahold of the utilities and ask them if there's any main replacements or any infrastructure improvements that had to be had, and we'll notify them at least five years in advance that we're going to be doing a road, and hopefully they get all their work done. We also would have storm response and recovery. Again, I mentioned the storm in '21, October. That was a sign of how we go about things, and we go out there and force and take care of it. One of the, another key initiative is the MS4 Stormwater Permit Compliance. And every year, the, the, what's the word I want?
Mandate?
Hmm?
Mandate?
Well, yeah, it is a mandate, but there's more mandates. Every year, the requirements go up, and we have to hire engineering firms to go and take care of that. There's a public education part of it. There's several different parts of the stormwater program. We also put in for DEP grants, applications. We receive approximately 15,000 or more a year just for our recycling program, and that's called the RDP Program, Recycling Dividend Program, and we'll get money to put towards recycling. We also do public education about the recycling, recycling regulation changes, which recently there has been two. One is that mattress, well, really one, mattress recycling is now mandatory. Another initiative as far as the sewer department is the Sewer INI Program, Sewer Inflow and Infiltration Program, which we go out and camera the lines in the system, and we repair any defects, keeping any outside water from infiltrating into the pipes, causing the water that we have to pump, and we have to pay either the MWRA through the North Hingham Sewer District or the Town of Hull for Weir River. We also, another key initiative is the grounds maintenance of all the public facilities. That was really apparent this year, where all the fields we had to have mowed on a regular basis, even though we're shortened down personnel. We did an excellent job, and we got out there and mowed every field prior to any games or practices happening. And then, and the last one is a transfer station fee analysis, which is basically ongoing, which we're analyzing the fee structures of surrounding towns and see how that may apply to Hingham. In the DPW, well, in the, yeah, in the DPW, we have 52 full-time positions, three-part-time positions. And as far as the budgets go, DPW budget has a total of this year's $4,497,471. $630,286 is for snow removal, and $387,000 is for road maintenance. The transfer station budget total is 1,000, I mean, $1,845,987, and the sewer budget I did put in an additional request this year for an Assistant Town Engineer. The Town Engineer, JR Frye, is pretty much straight out, and he has many, many projects to oversee, and those include road construction and paving projects, the Route 3A design, public safety facility, the traffic committee, the Harbor Wharf wall resiliency project, pedestrian improvements and grants, and there's a few more responsibilities other than that. I do say that he's doing a great job, but he does need the help, and we could use the additional person in that division. And that's about it. If you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Randy, thank you. Couple, couple of questions and comments. First of all, thanks for, thanks for all you're doing, your hard work. We're lucky to have you as superintendent. I really appreciate all you do, and thank you for that.
Sure.
You mentioned the fields work. You know, we had the rec. department in here last week, and just a lot of compliments on the work, the condition of the fields, you know, your department's attention to cutting the fields, especially, you know, in the, in the late summer and the fall when sports are going on and it's kind of a high level and the games are happening. So thank you for that. That's been, that's been a pretty successful venture for us, and thanks for your supporting that. You mentioned the uptick in the transfer station. I know the uptick, we saw an uptick during COVID, which obviously was because people were home more. People were working remotely, so there was a higher use of the transfer station. People were easily going probably Thursdays being remote, Saturdays and Sundays being remote. And you said that that increase has stayed constant since?
We're about, we're about 9,000 cars a week. Yes, or 8,000, 8,000 plus, I should say.
Do you remember what it was before the pandemic?
It was about $7,000.
It was about seven, so it's increased that much? Wow, that's significant. So along those lines, I do think, I do see residents doing a good job recycling. And, you know, I, you know, my family and I were big into recycling, and we have, you know, bin for plastic, bin for the paper, but, you know, it's not lost on me just how much plastic we see in there, how much cardboard we see in there. A couple of years ago, I remember speaking with Steve Messenger, and he told me that, you know, at one, there was a point in time when the town was actually making a profit on recycling items, but he said that that was diminishing. Are we still, are we losing money now on recycling, or where are we with that process?
Well, we're not making money. There are a few commodities that we're still getting paid for, even though the market has dropped considerably. We were, and one of those items is cardboard. We do bail the cardboard, we get paid per ton. There is now a shipping fee, where there was no shipping fees before, so every time we have to ship something, it's $100 or better. The cardboard, basically, eight months ago, we were getting over $200 a ton, and now I looked at recently, it's $30, $30, $35 a ton. So it's all market demand, and all the other recyclables, basically, I'm paying to get rid of, plus the shipping.
It's good to know.
I am, on that note. We have installed a baler. We did buy the baler through the RDP Program, the Recycling Dividend Program. It's been a long time coming, but it is ready to start. We just have to go through the startup process, and that way we can pick out the plastics and other commodities and bail them separately for a higher, higher price when we go to sell it. So there are some commodities out there that are up into the hundreds of dollars. Right now, we bail it all together, and we don't get that. We still have to pay, but what I want to do is bail those one commodities together and sell that separately and get it per the ton price.
I agree with you about this Assistant Engineer position. You know, JR's doing quite a bit here, and I do think that's an additional request that we need to really push for. It's needed. I also don't think we've really addressed your capital needs in the last couple of years, and I know that you have them, and we're trying to figure out a solution maybe this year to, to increase our capital budget. How are you with capital needs, especially with plowers, things like that, that the community really relies on?
So the vehicles, my equipment that has to be replaced right now, like, I put in for 10 things last year and got one, which is the loader, which is appreciated. We needed a loader, a Volvo loader, but we haven't replaced any six-wheel big dump trucks for two years, and if it's, it will go on to three. Now, we did replace one, one every year, just to keep those up, and they take a beating. They, they work all through the snow, and they're getting salt. They might not have a lot of miles, but they're starting to rot within. And in the, in the, in the summer, they're utilized on roadside and in the paving projects. So they're worked all year round, all the time, all of our equipment is. But we need the reliability of the equipment, especially in snow, in order to remove the snow from the streets.
I will say on that, Bill, if you don't mind jumping in. So Randy presented last night to the Capital Outlay Committee his capital needs. They're significant. There's a lot there, but there's a lot of needs there. And like you said, you know, last year, we, we had the ability to focus a lot on the fire department's extensive needs. Prior years, we've done some of the other departments, but the DPW has, has been left behind. I think I've said in the past, one of the things that keeps me up at night is Randy's deferment list. It just gets so long, and we depend so much on this equipment, and it's, so much of it is well beyond its useful life. And so thank you for your support for this, because his, his capital needs are significant and important.
I probably have 25 pieces of equipment that have been deferred, and I mean deferred like years. So it's quite a, it's quite a list.
Time to address some of those needs, I think.
Yes.
So, you know, being in this position, every time we get a snowstorm, I get very nervous because I know that our snow removal budget is, is one of the things that you can't really, can't really control. It's a significant cost to us. Can you give residents an idea of, when we get like a bad snowstorm, one of those snowstorms when we're in all day and it snows for about six hours continuously, what's, what's the average cost of something like that?
You're talking $200,000?
About $200,000 for a snowstorm. Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Depending on the type of storm.
Yeah. So I'm going to keep praying for mild winter, like I've been doing the last two years. So, but that, thank you, Randy. Joe, any questions?
Thank you, Randy. I do have a couple of questions. First, you talked about the cars per week, that volume.
Yes.
What about the actual volume of, of what is brought to, to the transfer station? So you may have more cars bringing fewer items, or are we seeing a real increase in the quantity that's being delivered?
In the last three years, we've seen a downtick in trash.
Okay.
We've seen a slight uptick in recycling, but it's all around 500, 5, 5,300 ton, and that's what I'm budgeting for, is 5,300 ton. So it's...
That, that number seems like it's relatively consistent, and so...
It has been.
Yeah.
Through the years, I have seen it as, as up as high as 8,000 ton or 9,000 ton.
But it's down, it's down now.
It's down, yes.
So the uptick that you were talking about really is not an uptick in what I would call the, what's being dropped off. It's really just vehicle traffic.
Yes.
And that has its own implications in terms of the environment, having more cars going and, but, but in terms of the impact on the transfer station, it does not seem to be a real, a real impact, unless, unless you're talking about traffic control.
It would be traffic control. That would be about the only impact.
Yeah, okay. And the System Engineer position, is that the $96,000 that we see added?
Yes.
Okay. We have had, I think each member of the Select Board's been contacted at some point about the moratorium on road openings and whether it can be lifted and why do we have it? So perhaps you could just address that briefly as to why we have it, why we need it, and why it should not be lifted?
Sure. So anytime, especially during the winter, and you open up a road, you decrease the lifespan of that road. And especially in the winter, when you have the frost and the rain and the snow, and it's not patched correctly, then water will get underneath the road, and water is the worst enemy of a road, and it will start deteriorating the whole road. So there has been a moratorium in place, starting November 15. We have allowed, in past years, allowed the gas company to do main work because we were going to repave that road, and part was that they were, they were giving us a significant amount of money to reconstruct that road. They are no longer doing that, and I basically went out of my way this year to tell everybody that, and we've had meetings with utilities, that we were not going to open roads this year unnecessarily, unless the selectmen forced me to.
And you, and you have a published schedule that's out there in terms of which roads...
Yes, yes. The moratorium starts on November 15 and is alleviated on April 15.
Great. And one final question related to recycling, it's not recycling, it's composting. I know you've been contacted by residents about whether the town should be offering composting at the transfer station, some other location, or what we can be doing, or whether or not that should be totally a private opportunity and not associated with, with the town. Do you have any thoughts on, on where we're going?
So my thoughts is that I think composting is great, and we do as much of it as we can in-house. In other words, the, the grass, the leaves, all that, we compost. And this, the, the transfer station is such a small footprint, footprint, especially for composting. To add something else would be very difficult to do. And not only that, when you introduce food waste, now you're introducing vermin and vermin control. And we do have a program to take care of that. The budget is very small, but I would hate to control the vermin that would come about. There's a, there's a number of reasons.
Sure. But am I correct that there was, I don't know if you still do it, but you could go down to DPW and actually buy at a really reduced cost a composting?
Yes, yes. There's a DEP grant, which we're a part of, and people would only have to pay $25, and we pay the rest. I think that it's a price is what, around $60? Yeah. So we buy a pallet every time, and the residents let us know, and we reserve a spot for them, reserve the compost bin, and then they come in and pick it up.
Great, thank you. Were you asking the gentleman in the very bright...
I'm sorry, that, that's the assistant.
Christmas tacos.
Assistant Matt Cahill.
I was going to compliment you on your, on your Christmas sweater. That's it, no other questions. Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just quickly, thank you, Randy. I definitely see the need for the Assistant Engineer, and this position would report to JR's position.
Chair and myself, yes.
Or yourself, okay. And the capital needs, I appreciate, I know those are long overdue. I'm assuming it's a prioritized or re-prioritized list was presented to Capital Outlay?
I do it every year.
Okay, perfect. One question, just to follow up on the recycling costs and the trash removal. I noticed the trash removal services fee or expense actually went up.
Yes.
Is that just related to the cost going up or the additional trash?
We have a contract with CMAS for five years. It will be up in 2024, Tom. It will go up automatically 3% the next two years. Costs for C and D, construction and demolition, that has a company bought that, New England Recycling Company it's called, I forget what it's called, but they went up from $85 a ton to $135 a ton, plus fuel costs. So that has gone basically through the roof.
Okay.
So I tried to estimate what we're going to have to dispose of, and that's how I, I came up with the budget.
Okay. So would it help if we were recycling more? I know there's a cost associated with that as well, but...
It always helps when you recycle more.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It, the markets have to change, and, and they keep telling me they will. At some point, they will, but it's, it's up to the market. Right now, it's easier, it's cheaper to recycle, even though we're paying, but trash costs are going up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Do any members of the public have any questions about the Public Works, Transfer Station, and Sewer budget? All right. Randy, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Matt, thanks very much. Good seeing you. Next item on the agenda is the Town Hall Budget. We have Jeff Peasey here with us this evening. Jeff, good evening. Come on up.
All right. So I'll present this budget with Jeff this evening, and he's joined by his colleague Horatio Hemmings.
Yes, Horatio, good evening.
So I think, as you guys know, Jeff and his team of five people, three full-time and two part-timers, take great care of the Town Hall facility, as well as several other Town Hall building, or municipal buildings, including GR Hall, 308 Cushing Street, 8 Short Street, even the Memorial Bell Tower they were doing in work recently. In this facility, this campus is 137,000 square feet. It was last renovated in 1997, 1998. As you all know, it was an old school before that. This contains most of our town departments, including the police station, although that will be moving to the new public safety facility in the coming years, the senior center, the recreation department and facilities, the school administrative offices, and our regional 911 dispatch center that serves Hingham, Hull, Norwell, and Cohasset. His team already went over that. So in FY24, their request is $312,737 for salaries and $339,800 for expenses.
Thanks very much. All right. So to Jeff and Horatio, just really appreciate your dedication to, to what you do, and, you know, you're just, you're both are so popular in Town Hall, and really appreciate all the work you do, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions. Liz, do you have any question about this budget item?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Joe.
I have a question for Tom first, which is, is any part of the Town Hall budget allocated either to the schools or to the other areas that are being supported by this budget?
The, the one part of the budget that is subsidized is by Shrek, the 911 Dispatch Center. So they do pay, they pay rent to, to, to the town, they subsidize part of the maintenance team, and they pay some of the utilities directly for their operations.
But not the schools?
Not, not, okay.
Not the schools, no.
And also, you know, I should note that part of Horatio's job description is he's my arm wrestling partner, so...
What's the record, Joe?
Exactly.
Joe, what's your record?
We're not going there. We're not going there. But no other questions. Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions about this Agenda item? All right, seeing none. Jeff, Horatio.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for all you guys do. Take care.
Thanks, Horatio.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is the Information Technology Budget. We have Bill Arding with us, the Director of our IT Department. Bill, good evening.
Good evening. Happy Tuesday.
Happy Tuesday.
See your screen, that makes it easier. All right. We're...
If anything fails now, it's going to be on you.
The owls are working. We're good. So, yeah, it's actually one thing I didn't add in here, I should have updated this a little bit more, but a little bit of information, really hasn't changed a lot from year to year until we build a new building or something, but as far as what we provide services to, you know, 26 town departments, boards, committees, you know, the Zoom that we're all using and whatnot across 16 physical locations, cybersecurity defenses, which, you know, there's a lot, spam, web filters, so on and so forth, and always checking those logs and making sure we're good there. Over 300 users, 36 servers, a couple of storage networks, end devices, which are different from people, sometimes you have some shared, printers, security cameras, firewalls, access points, so on and so forth, to make everything work and make everything happy. We've got a couple of voice service, voice switches, 750 telephones throughout the town and school offices as well. We've got a couple of voice service, voice switches, seven hundred and fifty telephones throughout the town and school offices as well. And that's a shared service, obviously, you know, town and school. And we purchase it, maintain it, configure it, support it, end of life, and upgrade it, all of that equipment. And obviously we have the municipal websites. We've gone through some refreshes and gone through some more. You know, we've done the town, we're working on the library and the country club currently on a refresh on their design as well. And other various social media accounts as well. So, you know, we've got an extremely large team of three taking care of all of this. So we're, we're doing pretty good there. Next, next page. This is, uh, the images of our renovated data center, which, you know, midway through there, there used to be a wall and the floors and, ugh. First cabinet is, is the, was the first one that we actually got nice, neat and organized. We're still working our way through, cleaning everything up and we'll get it nice and neat. But some of the projects we've undertaken over the last year, we've done Fiber Loop, we're about ninety percent complete. It's actually terminated here in Town Hall. They've got to come back and label it so we know which connection goes where of the hundred and ninety-two strands of fiber that were run. Once that's done, we can start lighting it up and using it. So that's been a long time coming and, you know, really looking forward to, to getting that complete. Obviously, the renovation of the server room is complete and, you know, I'm happy to say, other than one, one broken wire during the entire construction project, which we had a spare, we just replaced it. That was the only thing. That was, you know, really tough time going through all that, trying to keep that live while they're in there cutting wires, cutting walls, unplugging things, putting stuff back in. So one broken wire is the only, only thing we had. Not a big deal. Very happy with that. We requested new switches. We ordered them back in March. The first phase, which are going to replace all those switches here in this building that are end of life. They're in, I think they're waiting for the last delivery of a couple of cables that interconnect them, and we'll start scheduling that in January to get those installed. We've also ordered phase two of that, so we've broken this into multiple phases. Phase one is the Town Hall complex. Phase two is the remote buildings. And phase three, we return to the server room and we're going to kind of neaten things up and put a, put a switch in each rack and really kind of streamline the operations and then make it easier for us to find everything. And last year, we also implemented, I think it was about February, a endpoint management system. So we can inventory and update and manage all of the devices, all the desktops and laptops and servers. So we can systematically push updates, confirm updates, patches, all the configuration changes as necessary to the devices without having to physically touch each one. We can schedule it and have it go out and do that automatically. So that's, you know, the cost of a system is, is like that is far less than a FTE. So they're, they're worth their weight in gold, having these systems in place. So we'll pop into our budget. We're looking for, you know, total salaries, four hundred nine thousand two thirty-six. We do get some reimbursement from the school and We're River for a couple of positions, so that helps. There's some offset there. And then expenses, four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-five thousand. So part of that is we're adding a few services into technology that we're taking from the town administrator's office budget. So telephone systems, Verizon and Granite and there's twelve, thirteen different carriers, I don't know. I haven't dug into this eighty thousand dollar line item to see what it is, but we're, we're taking over the payment of that. So that's really just a sliding of money from one department to another. It's not a net add from last year. We just, we manage all the functional of that, so it kind of made sense for us to pay the bills as well. And then also the copier leases. Again, we manage the relationship, manage the copiers and everything. And we sent the bill down the corner here to be paid, so we're just going to keep the bill and pay it directly. So, you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars add from last year that really is to the overall budget, not necessarily in that add, you know, townwide budget. It certainly is to me. We did increase service and support agreements by about twelve percent. That's reflective of things that have been added. You know, I know last week the board approved the transfer of some money for a procurement system, OpenGov. So, you know, next year I'll have to pay the maintenance on that. So there's twenty-six thousand dollars I'll have to take in as well as, and pay for that. Permanize, we've got an upgrade coming for that, that, you know, that's a little, some slight increases in the renewals of that. And obviously there was a lot of stuff purchased. There's something happened around three years ago, coming up and, you know, that required a lot of purchases and with those CARES Act funding for a lot of that stuff. And now we still have the equipment and the services, but now we have to pay for them. So that's, you know, where we came up with the twelve percent increase is that there's some additional things coming due that we hadn't been having to pay for the last two years because of the grants. Or some of the things came with three years of service and now that three years is up and we have to keep maintaining it. Happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Bill, appreciate all you do and you did a great job with the, with the, with the Town Hall upgrade on the IT front. In fact, you only had, only, only having one broken wire is pretty impressive, so thank you for that.
A lot of sleepless nights and days and, you know, how long days here at six-thirty with the contractors and until they left, just to make sure there was no problem.
Went very smoothly. Where are we with the upgrade to G R Hall? A lot of the veterans groups are asking me about that.
Yep. Like I said, when they get the fire, when they get the fiber terminated, it's all in here and get it labeled, we'll know what goes where of those hundred and ninety-two strands. And once we know that, we can light some stuff out over to there.
What's, so what's, what's the timeline, projected timeline on that?
They were supposed to be here last week. They got called off for, you know, somebody had a fiber cut and they actually, the fiber guys had to go back there and do the splice. But they should be back here. Probably going to lose next week with the holiday, but, you know, the week after. So I, I expect we'll, we'll be able to light it up by the end of January, start lighting things up.
That's fantastic. Great. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to confirm some numbers.
Sure.
So you talked about the telephone, which was a transfer over from Town Hall. So the item in Town Hall was sixty-nine thousand. It's now eighty thousand. So it's not quite a, a slide. We've, we've got, you know, a sixteen percent increase in that. Is that?
On, on that one, we looked at the, there's several accounts that go into that that fund all different types of telephones from the cell phones to the desk phones. But we took the last group of bills that we got and multiplied that by twelve just to capture the costs that we're paying right now.
Okay. I mean, because overall the IT budget is up over twenty-five percent, but a lot of that is, is because of the telephone. Are you comfortable with the level of our cybersecurity? Do, do we have enough in the budget? Because that, we cannot afford to underspend on that.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and that's something that, you know, I'm constantly looking at. I've, I've spoken to a few vendors about a SOC, a Security Operations Center, where they basically twenty-four seven monitor certain points. They put analyzing tools on your network and they watch those things. And they, they provide additional services with that as well, where they would do monitoring just on traditional uptime on some of the equipment as well. But looking at some of that and I'm, I'm hoping that we can get some of that in place next year as well. So again, part of that twelve percent was to, you know, absorb some of those things as well, those services.
And to what extent do we have redundancy so that if something goes down, you've got a backup system that's hopefully not been affected?
Well, yeah, we, last year we installed a new storage array, an active, active cluster, one physically here, one over at Fire Headquarters. Within that storage array, it is constantly taking snapshots and the time slices for those snapshots vary based on the data set we have. Like Munis will have a certain time slot. Other data doesn't change as much. We'll have a different time slice. But those, those are encrypted replications that we could easily fall back to within minutes within that. But then we also back up every night. We, we've got a full backup at night. That goes off-site as well. So we've got layers upon layers, which are, which is very important for that.
Great, thank you.
You know, even the best, I don't know, you know, it really didn't affect us too much here, but RackSpace is a, is a very, very big player in a lot of space and their exchange environment was hit with a ransomware attack two weeks ago, taking a number of municipalities, their email offline. It was isolated to their exchange services. But, you know, it's just, you, you gotta remember in Watchville, and what they do is they notice the activity and just unplugged everything and slowly worked at, at cleaning it up. So they took a very, very proactive approach to it, which is, which is good. And, you know, that's, that's one of the advantages. If we were to bring in a SOC type service here, they're watching it twenty-four seven. You know, I, I try to keep an eye on things, but, you know, I do sleep once in a while and.
Well, Tom doesn't.
So that, you know, would help me sleep better as well, having somebody's, somebody else with eyes on it off hours.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
I was going to ask about the telephone. So that moved from, not the select board budget, is it the Town Hall budget? Okay. The school reimbursement for IT, is that just support for administration in this building?
School administration, yeah.
Not the actual schools?
Right, not for the actual schools. And obviously the phone system is a shared service, so we manage the core of all that for them.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions about the Information Technology Budget? Seeing none. Bill, have a good evening.
Great, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the library budget. We have Linda Harper here and David Meakin, come on up.
Hi.
Good to see you. David, how are you?
Okay, thank you for having us tonight. So we are here to present the fiscal twenty-four library budget. And we'll start just by talking a little bit about our mission and services. So this is a lot of what we do. And if you haven't been to the library, you might know that, or you might not know, we are many things to many people. So we have a, a number of different things we do. I'll just kind of go over some of the things that are in our mission statement. So one of the most important things we do are providing physical and digital materials to our patrons. That's our books, that's our eBooks, that's our databases, that's the technology we loan. We basically loan a whole bunch of different resources for all kinds of different needs, whether it's recreational, educational, or informational. We also provide lifelong learning where we nurture personal growth and we try to encourage people in the community to always continue to learn and to give them a space to do so. We encourage early childhood literacy. We have a big focus on storytimes, getting, you know, books in kids' hands and helping them to get off to the right start because, as you all know, reading is critical to a child's education. We also provide a lot of informational, historical, cultural programs. Our programs are well-attended and it gives people an opportunity to come and learn something new in their own community without having to go too far. We also provide service on equal terms to all individuals in, individuals in the community. As you probably know, we help everyone from little babies to the oldest citizens in our, in our community. We try to do everything we can to meet those needs across a lot of different needs, age ranges, and abilities. We also provide an open, accessible, and collaborative environment. We're very supportive of equity, diversity, and inclusion in all things we do, collections, programs, and just our physical spaces. We're a community center. If you've ever come by and looked at our parking lot, you can see we are the place people go. You have nothing to do, come to the library. If you have something to do, come to the library. We also offer a diverse collection of print, media, electronic materials because we are trying to meet everybody's needs, whether it's someone coming in to do research, someone wants to learn something new, someone wants to meet a friend. We basically do it all. So some of the things that we do are evident in the numbers that we have. Our statistics are quite amazing. We're a very busy library on the South Shore, one of the busiest actually. We, in fiscal twenty-two, our patrons borrowed a total of three hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven items. And these are from our physical and digital collections. That's quite a borrowing pattern. Out of those, about a hundred and ninety-three thousand were for books, over seven thousand magazines, forty-six thousand movies, music, audiobooks. We circulated forty-seven thousand eBooks from our collection. So you don't have to go to Amazon and pay, you can get them free from the library. People are always surprised to hear that. The same with e-audiobooks. We had twenty-two thousand people download audiobooks they can listen to. We also circulated almost six thousand miscellaneous items. A lot of people are surprised to hear that the library loans more things than just movies and books. We loan puzzles, artwork, technology, household gadgets, electronic devices. You know, you need a mixing stand, we have one. You want, you know, a tablet for a computer, we have one. How about some of those, what are those virtual reality headsets? We have some really amazing things that give people a chance to really explore new things that come out and really, you know, try something new and, and expand their horizons. Interestingly enough, I'm going to make a note on the eBooks. The OCLN Network, the Old Colony Library Network of which we are a part, it's about thirty public libraries in the region. Just about a week or so ago, we hit a one million mark for circulation for eBooks for the year. So among us, thirty libraries, we just circulated about a million eBooks, just to give you a sense of how important the, the libraries are even digitally. Some more metrics we have. Our programs, our programs are very popular, you know, during COVID. We did a lot of online programming. We're returning to in-person programming. And out of the three hundred and ninety-two programs that we offered last fiscal year, we had four thousand five hundred people attend, which is quite amazing. Our library databases that you can use even at home, you can get on and get some really great information. Or at the library, we're used over forty-nine thousand times. Library materials that we send from one library to the end of others. So if you want a book and we don't have it, we can get it from another library, vice versa. We loaned forty-five thousand books last fiscal year. It gets sent through a delivery service. You place a hold from home and magically within a couple of days, it's right here at the doorstep for you to pick up. We also have over nine thousand registered borrowers who actively use their library card in Hingham, which is pretty amazing. Our population now is about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand or so, and nine thousand of them all have and use their library cards. So these are active users. People also come to the library to use the wireless internet, especially with so many people working from home and the dogs barking and the kids yelling. You go to the library to work. Last year, we had thirty-nine thousand connections to our wireless internet. People bringing their own devices and just hopping on the internet. The members of the public used the library meeting rooms last year a hundred and twenty-seven times. So that's, you know, I know you have public meetings here, but at the library, we also have meetings. People can book the spaces and for various, various things. So some of our key initiatives, these were identified in the library's long-range plan for fiscal twenty-two to twenty-six. These are some of the things that the trustees and the library staff are really working on for the next five years. We put together a strategic plan to help, you know, guide our actions during that time. Some of the things we identified were the improvement of physical spaces, the expansion of communication and marketing, growth as a community resource, the enhancement of our collections, and also the development of funding sources. And on the funding sources, one thing I'd like to mention is, if you haven't seen the letter in your mailbox right now, we have our annual fundraising drive. Every year, we ask residents and our patrons to contribute to our annual fundraiser. That money goes to help buying more books and materials and to have programs at the library. So if you haven't contributed, we would always appreciate any donation that you could make. So I just wanted to throw that out there, in case you forgot the letter. Staff and expenses, so now to the budget. So one of the things I want to talk about salaries and expenses, the salaries, we've, we've seen a quote that I, I love. It's one of my favorite. It's the most important resource that the library goes home at night. And it is absolutely true. I know it's true for all the town departments. But if it weren't for the staff we have at the library, we wouldn't be such an amazing library. The building's wonderful, the collections are wonderful, but it's the trustees, it's the staff, it's the people who make the building. And I think that's one of the reasons we have such a successful library. So now that I've launched into that, our budget. So our salaries for fiscal twenty-four are one million eight hundred six thousand two hundred and forty-three. That's for twelve full-time personnel and twenty-three part-time personnel. Our expenses are four hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven. And some of the major items in our expense column include our regular repair and maintenance costs, our utilities, our books and materials, and our OCLN network assessment. And that's the amount of money we pay to be part of the network of thirty libraries, so we have borrowing privileges and can use the other libraries. I also want to mention, what you don't see here is that we do have an active board of trustees who also contribute to the, to the running of the library. The trustees also contribute, this current year, two hundred fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars towards the purchase of books. The trustees also contribute, this current year, $215,568 towards the purchase of books and materials. So they, they do fund a large portion of our material budget. They also contribute $14,000 to programs at the library. So all the things that we offer at the library are funded by the, by the trustees. And one of the reasons we have this annual drive is to get the, the funds to be able to do these things, the books and the programming. So I think that is the conclusion of my presentation. Do I have any questions? And might I say, does David have anything he'd like to add?
Do you want to say a word about home delivery?
Yes, I do.
Many people don't know about that, and would be interested, I would think.
Yes. So, you know, I could, sometime I'll have a, a chance to sit here and tell everyone about all the amazing things we do at the library, but I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight. But like I said, we're many things to many people. One of the things that we offer that I would like to mention to people is our home delivery service. So for residents who are homebound and cannot physically get to the library, we have a team of volunteers who are residents in the town, who will pick out books, materials, other resources, and they'll actually bring it to the homebound person's house, drop them off, and a couple weeks later, they'll pick them up and drop off another batch. So if you're interested in a home delivery service, please call the main library and just ask, inquire about it, and we can get you set up. We have volunteers just waiting to help people who need help. So it is an amazing service, one of the, one of the many things we do to reach the people who can't reach us. Thank you for mentioning that.
So Linda and David, thank you very much. The library is such a tremendous part of the fabric of our community. And it's, you know, my entire life, it's always been like that. And it's just so great to see all, all the, the program offerings and all, all that occurs at the library. So many groups that I'm involved with, either scouts or other groups, use the rooms often, Linda, and that's very much appreciated by those organizations. So thank you for your leadership, Linda. And I'm enjoying my time, David, as a, as a liaison to the trustees. And the library trustees have tremendous passion for our library, and just, it's wonderful to see it. So I know you've been on the board for many years, David, and you, you were so dedicated to the library, and very much appreciate all you do as well.
Thank you.
So then I'm gonna turn to Liz, see if she has any questions.
Yes, thank you. I think it says a lot about our community, how treasured the library is. So thank you. Can you just explain a little bit about, I know there's a line item for books and periodicals, but the, the trustees also fund some of the book purchases, right?
Yes, yes, they do. So the, if I can get down to that line, let me see, it is, it was made...
116,000?
Yeah, 116,000, oh two oh. So out of that amount, so there's a state aid compliance number. So the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which regulates all the mass libraries, has a formula that you have to meet in order to qualify for state aid. If you, and, and part of that is how much you, your municipal appropriation requirement, how much the town, you know, appropriates. The other is a materials expenditure requirement, and that's, that's what this is. They have a formula based on your total municipal appropriation. They want to see increases every year. So you plug in the numbers to get this formula. If you qualify, you qualify for state aid, so you're able to get some money back into the town, which I believe in fiscal '23 was about 46, I looked at the cherry sheet, I think it was about $46,000 or so. It also enables you to apply for different grants that they have, LSTA grants, things like that. So when you plug in all the numbers for our, our total municipal appropriation, we come out with this, this number, and I'd have to get my calculator to add the 116 to the 215. So that's around 330-something, if my math is right. So out of that, the trustees have contributed about 215,000 for the past number of years, five or 10 years or so. I'd have to look back on that. And as that number changes, we've put the difference, the delta, onto the town as the trustees are at their financial capacity limit, I think, of, of being able to contribute that amount. So of that amount, that's a state aid requirement, and that's how we get that number. It's, it's rather a non-negotiable number, if we want to, you know, be certified and make our required numbers.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that.
Sure.
No other questions?
Joe?
Couple questions and a comment. I would start, Bill, by noting you're not just a lead, you're actually a trustee.
I did not point that out, but yes.
That's right. I'm wondering if you could comment about the volunteer opportunities that are offered? Because people want to get involved, and they, they really have a vested interest in the success of the library, and volunteering is one way to do that. So if you could just comment on that.
Absolutely. Thank you for, I love when we can pitch all these wonderful things. So the volunteers, one of the things you heard our volunteers do with the home delivery service. We have a number of just really wonderful, dedicated people in the community who volunteer their time. Some of the things they do are, we have a bookstore at the library. We sell used books, library discarded books. If you donate books to the library that are, you know, we don't add to the collection, what we do is we have a bookstore, and all the money raised from selling the books in the bookstore go into the book-buying budget to help us offset the cost of buying materials. That's all volunteer-run, 100%, as is our home delivery service. We have volunteers who come and shelve books in the children's department, adult department. If we need books that have, you know, need mending, some of them come and do the, the fixing up. We have other volunteers that come and they pull the hold. So when you're at home and you place a book on hold, there's a very good chance a volunteer will be in the next morning with a list, and we'll go get that book ready for you to pick up. So we have, we have some amazing volunteer opportunities at the library.
Can you get the number, by the way, you know, what the, the current number of volunteers?
Roughly about 100. It dropped off a little after COVID, so it's probably around...
100 volunteers, that's a big number.
And we could not run the library without them.
No, I, I believe they...
And not only that, excuse me, not only that, but they love to be volunteers. They regard that as a service to them.
Exactly.
Because service at the library, volunteering at the library, especially for some of our senior volunteers, who are probably the most productive of all, it's an important thing for them to contribute. It's socially important, and so it's a, it's a kind of a hard thing to quantify, but it's an extremely important function for them and for us. And as a person, as for, as for actually doing volunteering...
I was gonna ask you, so if people wanted to do that, who, who do they call?
If they call the main library, they can ask about volunteer opportunities, and Fickenworth will be the one to respond to their calls, see what they're interested in, help them get set up. Two, two things I'd like to mention, one is that our volunteer, we also have a junior volunteer program for younger kids who are too young to start working, so they're not that, you know, 14, 15-year-old age range, but they want to actually start giving back to the community. We do have a junior volunteer program, and they shelve in the children's room, and we kind of get them used to what a work environment would be like, on a volunteer basis, of course. And our volunteers are all in age ranges. You don't have to be retired, you can be young, middle-aged, old. Some people come after work. There's, there's all kinds of things you can do. The other thing is, we also have some volunteers who are in the tax write-off program. I know Michelle can probably give a little more information about that, but the town does offer a chance to, you know, help write off some of those costs associated with taxes, and some people do that by volunteering at the library. So that's definitely something else to consider as well.
And you also mentioned donations. And so what are the opportunities, and how do people go about making donations? Now, I'm not talking money, I'm talking about physical, folks or whatever.
Yes, yes. We're always looking for books in good condition, books, materials, things like that, even puzzles in, in, you know, good, good condition. If you bring them to the library, just right to the main desk, we accept about a box of donations a day per person, just so you don't clean out your whole library at once for storage reasons. And then, you know, if you want a receipt, we'll write your receipt for it, but that will go to the bookstore, and the bookstore volunteers will sort through those and figure out what they can sell. Interestingly enough, we oftentimes get donations that we choose not to sell for one reason or another. They may not quite meet our criteria. But if they're, if they're decent, in decent condition, we actually, we then donate them to a, an organization called More Than Words. And David, do you know a little bit about this?
I know a bit about More Than Words. It's an organization. My wife is very much involved with it, based in Boston and Waltham, which trains young people in, who are socially challenged and have been, various challenges, to, to learn how to run a business, and actually learn how to run a bookstore. And if you've ever been to their bookstore on Berkeley Street, that's another one in Waltham, they do incredible social good in helping young people in terms of their self-esteem and their ability to manage something. And so, and they have relationships with libraries like ours. In fact, I think there's a More Than Words collecting bin at the dump, actually, there. And, but they come to the library and take books as well.
They do, yes.
I want to turn to a different topic. I believe it was either last year or the year before that the library did away with fines for late books. I'm wondering how that's going? Are you getting books returned? Was there a revenue hit? What, what are the implications of the, of...
All of the above. We are getting books returned. People absolutely love it. I have only heard one complaint that, that we got rid of fines, only one. Most people are thrilled not to have it. It is a bit of a deterrent to people who want to, you know, take things, or they're afraid of, you know, getting it back on time. We want to get rid of that, that stigma, and also just have people be able to borrow. So people are returning it on time. Most people are really good. Revenue hit, if somebody doesn't return an item within 60 days, they'll get billed the replacement cost, but that, even that hasn't gone up past normal. So it's really, I think it, it was an unfounded fear. People were afraid that, oh, if we don't penalize people, they won't return them. They're gonna return them anyway. People are, most people are, you know, honest and have good intentions. So that has not been a problem. The revenue hit, the, the fine money used to go into the trustee budget, so that is a revenue hit. That's one of the reasons that we're focusing so much on the, on the fundraising issue, because it was a significant revenue loss for the trustees. I know last year, we had the Beyond the Books fundraiser, which was out on the front lawn of the library. We are planning another fundraiser, tentatively scheduled for, is it April 28th? 28th of this year. So mark your calendars, next year. So I said it first, so we claim the date, April 28th. It is the 28th, right? We want to hold another fundraiser, and, and part of this is to make up for some of those lost revenues.
It should be said that the fines were, had been dropping, the fine income had been dropping for many, many years steadily, because people didn't carry cash. So it, you know, it's a loss. It's not the loss it would have been if we'd done it many years before. And it's not only a trend, it's, it's really spreading. I mean, I believe last week, Sitch would announce that they're going fine-free. And while that has declined, the bookstore income has increased. Libraries didn't used to have bookstores. Today, the library bookstore is the only independent bookstore in town, and there are good books at great prices, and it is a serious, significant revenue generator for the library, and done by volunteers.
When you talk about, though, the loss of revenue from the fines, that's a hit on the town, though. It's not a hit to the trustees, because to the extent the trustees don't have the funds for the books, you increase the amount that you're looking for from the town.
Yes.
So that decision had an impact on the financial contribution that the town is making. And so it, and I guess I'm a little concerned that that decision was made by the trustees without input from the town, since it's a town hit.
Prior to the elimination of, of the, the fines, we had already frozen that $215,000 number. Part of that was because of declining revenues, because of online renewals. You know, it used to be people couldn't renew, but now at midnight, you think your items due, you can do that. There's also automatic renewals. So we found across the board it had done that. So we had actually already set that 215 number, and had, you know, talked to the town about that prior to this decision being made. So in that, it really didn't affect anything in past, and what we're trying to do is make up for the revenue on other sides. So that 215 number was in place before we decided to eliminate fines for, for quite some time.
I, I would also add that the money that we raise, every dollar that we raise, either through income on the invested funds or through fundraisers such as the annual appeal, or the event we're gonna have next year, every dollar that we raise is a dollar that does not come from the taxpayers. And I think historically, the library has done well, trustees have done well. We need to do better, and we will do better. The, the elimination of the fines, I don't, I don't remember the precise process of communication that took place with the town. We were aware that it was a, it was, it was gonna be a reduction in income, but it, it's been a national trend, and a regional trend for reasons of fairness. And it's one of those things where you, you know, you don't want to maintain a, a source of income from the public, a system of fines for the public, just because of the income. You have, you know, just like you don't, you don't want to maintain excessive parking ticket fines or speeding ticket fines in order to raise money. Of course, we don't do that, but we're sensible of the fact that we shouldn't be doing it at the library either. But as I say, I don't remember exactly who talked to whom at, at what point, but I think we're going to make a good faith effort, and we will continue to make a good faith effort to re, to continue to raise funds. We, the trustees, we're all volunteers too, and we contribute as well to replace any dollar that we lose, that we have lost in that, in that, through that, that medium.
I'm gonna finally ask about another national trend which is disturbing, which I have not seen in Hingham, which is a move for censorship at libraries. And I'm not aware of that happening here. I am aware of it happening in other communities, and I'm just wondering, have you seen it? Are you getting pressure either from parents elsewhere to, to limit what is available to residents for, for some sort of censorship reason?
That's a, thank you for bringing that up. It's a very good point. It is a, become a national issue right now with a lot of libraries. And there's a lot of unfortunate incidents over it, let's say, that librarians and their patrons are, are trying to sort out right now. In Hingham, I think everyone has been, you know, more than civil. If people have questions about the collections, we talk about it. There's not really anything like you've seen on the national level. There are always people who may have concerns about particular content, in which case, we have a, you know, a, a way they can, you know, request a, a discussion about that. We can figure out what the issue is. Is something in the wrong, placed in the wrong room? Should it be age-appropriate? Is it, you know, so I think people here are mostly fine for discussion. I have not seen any major things as some of our neighboring communities I know have experienced. David, do you have anything to add to that?
As for policy, I mean, maybe you would say something about the, the ALA Bill of Rights that we, that we follow. We have, we are very, we of the trustees have a very clear policy in ensuring the, the full accessibility of our collections and our services to all citizens. And I think we would push back very hard at any attempt to restrict materials or, or library uses from anyone, and that has never happened. We've never, I don't think we've ever had pickets. We've never had anyone demanding that we remove certain books. If they were to do that, we wouldn't do it. We can't do it. I mean, our policies are predicated on openness and accessibility to all, all members of the community. And, you know, we're very proud of that, and our staff, Linda and her staff, they are really, this is in their genes. It's really in their makeup. We do this for everybody. Everything we do is for everybody. And we're not in the business of banning certain types of books, certain subjects, or certain authors. I'm sure there's probably a copy of Mein Kampf somewhere in the library. I don't know that there is. But if I wanted to read it, I'd go to the library to get it. So that's something that we all count on. We all depend on our trustees and our, and our staff members to protect those, those, those interests. So if that would have happened, you know, you'd hear from us.
Yeah. A librarian's job is, is not to decide what people should have. It's to help them get it and just make sure it's from validated, vetted sources that are reliable. Beyond that, it, it's, you know, up to the individual to figure out what they need for their research or whatever they're doing that they would need particular resources. But we are all for equity and diversity and inclusion in all that we do. You know, having people go to the library to get access to information is why libraries exist, and that's what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Do any members of the public have any questions about the library budget? I'd seen none. Linda, David, thank you.
Good to see you.
A great evening.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the building budget. We have Mike Clancy with us this evening. Mike, come on up. Good to see you, Mike.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Let me give you my budget presentation for the building department for FY '24. I think I've explained this to the selectmen before, but I think I'll go through it again. The mission and service, the building department, inspectional services department fall under the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. We enforce a series of 14 international codes, including the state building code, residential, commercial, the fire code, existing building code, mechanical code, swimming pool, spa code, energy conservation code, architectural access board for disabilities, zoning act, chapter 48, zoning bylaw, general bylaw, plumbing and gas codes and electrical codes. Building officials are on duty 24/7. Benchmark. Permit fees collected in 2023 through November was $1,269,550. That included building sheet metal, certificate of inspections, final cost after David's certificate of use and occupancies. That was $1,134,467. Electrical plumbing and gas was $135,083. Total permits to date issued were 3,025. Total inspections to date, building sheet metal, electrical plumbing, gas zoning complaints were 5,092. And that's down about 72 inspections or, or 1.51% from last year at this time. The key incentives, building projects under construction and nearing completion. The Amazon distribution center at 100 Industrial Park Road received a certificate of use and occupancy. Derby Street Shops continue to renovate existing spaces and adding new businesses, including the Shake Shack Untold Breweries. Planet Fitness received a certificate of use and occupancy after their renovations. The Hingham Shipyard continues to renovate existing spaces as well as adding the Birth Restaurant. 105 North Street has received a building permit for new residential and commercial building, well underway. Several more homes throughout the town have been demolished and rebuilt over the past year. Staff and expenses. The salaries are $273,942. We have six full-time personnel, one building commissioner, two administrative assistants, one building, three building officials, six part-time officials. The expenses of this year are $14,910. That did go down $1,050 after talking with Tom and, on different issues as far as the major items. We did reduce the in-state travel from 5,000 to three inspections. As far as vehicle, fuel is still $2,678. The code books were 2,500. We are anticipating in June we'll have new code books for all electrical plumbing, gas and building. Also, the building revolving fund is credited with plumbing, gas, electrical fees and is used to pay the inspectors. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Mike, thank you for all you do. You do a wonderful job with the building department. Appreciate your hard work.
We have a great team down there.
So, it sounds like we're seeing an uptick, an uptick in, in construction, building now that kind of come out of the pandemic here. I know that's a good source of revenue for the, for the town. But what are you seeing as a trend?
It is, we usually issue around 12 to 1300 building permits a year. I think we're, we're going to be pretty close to that again this year. We're approaching 1,200 right now. I think there's about 30 in queue right now. So, we'll probably be around, you know, about 1,250 or so, I think, this year. So, we might be off a little bit, but it's pretty close for, over the past few years. But again, people, it's a desirable town to come in. The average addition or a single-family home costs $300 a square foot to build. And it's, it's just a trend that it is now. They are having some issues with getting help and also getting their materials and things. There's still a struggle to get that, but they seem to be dealing with it, the contractors and things. And the homeowners, sometimes they're getting a little frustrated with their contractors and things like that. But it seems to be okay. Seems to be working out.
Joe, any questions?
Just, just one, but Mike, thank you for everything you do. It's, it's so important to the town.
It's not just me, it's my team.
It's your, it's, it's your team, absolutely. So, the permit fees are a significant source of, of revenue. Do you know how our fee levels compared to neighboring towns are? Are we in the same ballpark, higher, lower? I, I just don't have a sense of that.
Well, with Tom, we have discussed this and we went through that and I, I did give a, some information on that. We're about in the middle right now. We haven't really adjusted the fees since 2009. And again, we're, we're right in the middle. I believe we should, to be competitive with the rest of the towns around, they should be raised a little bit.
Are the fees based on, like a percentage of a project? Or of a, or is it basically, you know, so many dollars for this type of work?
Correct. As it is right now, it's $10 per thousand of the value of construction for residential.
Right.
And $15 a thousand for, for commercial.
So, as the, as the cost, as the value goes up, our fees go up.
Correct.
So, we already have in many ways a self-adjusting increase because it's based on, is it dollars per value? And so, you know, as inflation carries those values up, the amount we collect would go up.
It's true, but we've also, the average, back in 2009, the average home as far as inspections had around 12. With the new codes and things that are out now, we're doing about 20 inspections per house. So, again, it's more staff going out. Some of the fees, we have $35 for an occupancy permit. It costs the town $60 to send an inspector out there. So, we're, you know, kind of losing money on that. Where I would say Hull adjusted their prices last about a year ago and we're about, about $5 difference for the commercial and residential as far as that. But again, we're right in the middle right now. But again, they, the, the fees should be looked at, definitely, to be competitive and also to pay for, you know, the staffing and expenses.
Just to jump in, like Mike said, we've been working on the concept of an article to review the building fees, the building department fees, as well as potentially other fees in town, which is a heavier lift legally. So, I think we're going to focus on the building department this year. We'll be talking to you folks here in the next few days and weeks. I think that, you know, one of the things like Mike is pointing out is, yeah, we want to be competitive with our neighboring towns, but we also want to make sure that we're at least covering our costs. So, there has to be a baseline and right now we're not meeting that. So, there needs to be a review and an adjustment, but, but we're in the middle of that review to determine what that adjustment really needs to look like. But more to come here in the, you know, January 3rd, January 10th, January 17th.
So, Liz, did your group look at building fees when you were?
We did, actually. And that was one of the recommendations, to look at the building department fees as well as fees across the town and really think about and analyze if there should be a global structure and how that would be communicated, if it would all be on the website as an example so people know. But I think at a minimum, you want the, you know, building revolving fund to be kind of self-sufficient, right? So, the permit fees are supporting what's going out, right? Paying the inspectors, the vehicles, uniforms, et cetera. So, certainly something that the Sustainable Budget Task Force has been looking at.
And one other question, Mike. How are you doing in terms of people appealing your decisions to the zoning board? Any of that this year?
Boy, I don't believe so.
That's great, okay. That's because you don't have Bob Devon who's going after that.
Don't give him any ideas.
Being an enforcement department, there's really no easy way of telling somebody no. But if you sit down and you explain it to them, they usually come around and they, they're usually okay with it, you know? Sometimes they're not happy with it, but, you know, it is what it is. And even, you know, Hingham's zoning is much, much better than most of the towns around. Much, much better.
Thank you.
Joe, can I comment on that? Just, I'll be very brief. So, one, one of the reasons that people accept Mike's explanations the way they do is because he's fair. He's a very fair person. He's a naturally good-hearted, fair, honest person. And that comes across when you're being told no and you're getting an explanation. I think that that's a big part of the reason why the town doesn't suffer some of those problems that other towns do. So, thank you, Mike, for your help there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
No other questions. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions about the building department budget? Mike, thanks very much. Have a great evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very hard.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right, next item on the agenda is the South Shore Country Club budget. I see we have Kevin Whaling, Kevin Whalen attending by Zoom. Kevin, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. The FY '24 budgets for South Shore Country Club, we have, you know, a lot of things happening from a capital, improving capital investment standpoint is concerned. And, you know, along with, you know, bringing on Brian, the new maintenance building and then looking at facility assessment. So, as we go into the, the next slide there, you can see that, you know, as we all know, we have a great ATMO course, the driving range, PGA tour, golf facility, pro shop, youth programs, bowling alley, daddy area, function space, professional lessons. And, you know, one of the things I think, you know, the driving range, we're putting investments in that as well in this year's budget by increasing, by, by new equipment over there to make sure that that is something that is available for not only our permit holders, but also our guests to drive some revenue. That has really not been something that we have a lot of revenue out, so we want to try to improve that. You know, golf simulators and the bowling should be back up online this year for the first time. We're really kind of getting back and seeing the revenue numbers that we saw prior to the pandemic. You know, as, we want to provide superior recreational experience for all South Shore Country Club guests through high-quality facilities, programs, professional instruction and exceptional customer service. And we have a great partnership with the recreation department, Mark and Mike and I. We offer some programs, but we also offer programs throughout the year for, for, for children and adults. And that has really driven a lot of revenue in our, on our, you know, on our lesson side of the business. So, we've done a great job as far as maximizing the amount of money that we can produce from the lessons that we give not only to the kids in town, but also adults in town. Work with South Shore Country Club Management Committee in front of South Shore to develop long-range plans to enhance the infrastructure amenities that we offer here at South Shore Country Club. One of the things that we've been doing, I think you all know that we've done a facility assessment to kind of give us a pathway forward to keeping, getting the buildings up to where they need to be. As you all know, there's, there's a lot of firm maintenance issues that need to be addressed. This step of getting facility assessment will help us develop the long-range plan and also help us as we develop the master plan for the country club. Of course, we have a, you know, a great partner, the Greenside Grill, that provides full-service restaurant catering services as an event venue. So, it's a, a great partnership between us and the Raffiels that make that happen. So, all right, if you go to the next slide. We, one of the things I think, you know, the golf course is about 85% of our revenues. We are kind of pretty much matched out on the number of rounds that we can do in a year. One of the things that we are doing this year is that we have gone up 10% on our rates. We have about 400 people on our waitlist to become permit holders. And so, we've gone up not only the daily use fees, but also the, the permits. And the reason for that is we get into our budget, we look at, we have a maintenance building debt service coming online next fiscal year. And what that means is that obviously we're going to have to, you know, pay for that, you know, the building over the next 20 years. And so, we want to make sure that we still maintain profitability as we go forward, even with that coming online, another debt service coming online. But I think the other golf course obviously is in great shape, but, you know, we have to really credit Jake Silver, our assistant superintendent and his staff that worked very hard to, you know, make that happen. And the course is, you know, considered a, you know, a championship course and it's always, you know, we have a high level of expectation of what we want to keep the course at and Jake is able to maintain that to satisfy all our guests. Go to the next slide. We've done a facility assessment. It's in draft form now. So, that will provide us not only one year, three year, five year, kind of 10-year things that need to get done, but also it will allow us to, you know, kind of take a look at, you know, where they are as we, you know, also plan for the master, you know, the master plan for the facility, which will, should be done probably sometime in March, that we should have that by. You know, and also have costs assigned to all the different items that need to get done. These next two items, the key initiatives, are things that were highlighted in the facility assessment. And it's the roof replacement of the bowling alley, where the locker rooms are, and then also the original clubhouse where the function space is. So, that is a project that's going to cost about $230,000. And that is, you know, something that really needs to get done. The roof is, the awl, is not that old, but because of the high winds and what have you, it's, it's really aged, you know, faster. And I just, at this point, you know, it's, I think we're pretty much running out of flexile, you know, to keep it all bright in the building. So, we really need to, you know, look at replacing that for the next year. And then the next item is the replacement of the HVAC system in the main clubhouse. The locker rooms, the main lobby area when you come in off the golf course, that area needs a new HVAC system. That's been estimated to cost $170,000. So, we want, what we want to do is we're really trying to make sure that we either take it out of budget on, on these items that we have or that we look at, you know, we don't want to add any more long-term debt. So, one of the things we would look at doing is transferring $400,000 from our reserve fund or our fund balance, which we have about $800,000 in this year. And what that would do is we would take that money so we wouldn't incur that long-term debt to put, make these long-term investments into the building and infrastructure to, you know, make sure that at least the envelopes of the building and the systems are working properly. We also obviously have the pool and we're monitoring the status of that and hopefully we'll be able to, when things get resolved, we'll be able to move forward with that. The other item that we're working with our partners at Hingham Light is, and this is something that the maintenance building was designed to be able to carry, a solar array. And it would produce about $10,000 worth of electricity annually. So, we're working with them to, you see, how we're going to move forward to make that project happen. And I think, you know, we'll have continuing conversations of how the project is funded and, you know, who owns it and what it looks like, might change from now to when the final articles are needed. But, you know, we really want to kind of get moving forward because the building is really a perfect location from the sightlines to, you know, stubborn exposure, the degree of the roof. And also, you know, the, the infrastructure is all built and it's new, so it's really ready to go. So, we want to try to move that project forward, fast-track that ahead of another, you know, energy project that the town has going on. The new rough mower is an $80,000 item. That item is something that we would take out of our budget and that's one of our line items for equipment. And that is something that we just leave those machines last about 12 years and it's, the ones that we have are definitely at the end of their service life. So, we need to move forward with getting another new rough mower. The final item here on the fleet of 64 golf carts. Um the final item here on the fleet of sixty-four golf carts, we our golf carts are about maybe seven years old after um this next season and so what we're proposing to do is to lease for two years sixty-four golf carts um in April of fiscal year twenty-four so that'd be a year from uh next April and that will allow us to do the two-year lease because we're gonna be moving into the new maintenance barn that will allow us to house the carts where the equipment is stored now but that's only about half the cart so what we're hoping to do is be able to kind of begin to plan for a transition from our you know gas carts to electric carts uh so we really need that two years to kind of plan um and build up the infrastructure to be able to take on um electric carts so what we would do is lease these carts for two years and then move to transition to um you know purchasing the electric carts at that point in time and be able to house them um in the cock barn that we currently have and actually try to create some additional space for additional costs as well. So that's kind of the plan and so that would also be coming out of our budget and that's a line item that is on budget, it's thirty-five thousand dollars for this fiscal year uh the twenty-four and it would have to be about seventy thousand dollars for the fiscal year after that because it would be double on the amount um you know because it'd also be next the first year of FY twenty-four, it's only three-month period and then FY twenty-five will be a full a full season so we're gonna have to double that line item. You know when I've talked about the increased revenues, we anticipate almost about uh you know it's two point three million seven hundred two two million three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of revenue in FY twenty-four, this is with increases in uh rates also if everything being back online as far as the bowling alley and simulators, lessons continue to improve and as well as the driving range so we feel very confident that um you know the the revenues will increase probably by about ten percent in FY twenty-four with the increase that we have and we still anticipate that we will have a profit to be able to add to the fund balance in this fiscal year as well so it'll add to that approximately the eight hundred thousand dollars that we have in fund balance. All right, if you go to the next, so we have about nine full-time personnel, thirty part-time seasonal, that's the starters, the you know brown screw, all of that um and our expenses for the year on the on the seasonal side is about two hundred and ninety-three thousand and then about seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is for our full-time employees. We have a total of one million forty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for our payroll in this budget. Again, it goes over some of the major expenses that we have, the thirty-five thousand for the golf par, these one hundred and sixty-seven thousand is just for golf course applications, that's for seed, fertilizer, um all those different items that herbicide things that we need to do to make sure that the course is in good condition and then additional the the big bump in our budget this year is the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we have for debt service on the maintenance building that we will be carrying uh you know for the foreseeable future and then also utility costs and fuel costs, fuel costs are up significantly as they are for everyone as as our utility costs so between all those items and then eighty thousand dollars for purchase of the new rough mower and those are all items that are actually in our um in our budget, in our operating budget. Thank you, you said it, I think that's it.
Kevin, thank you very much, Liz, any questions?
Um yeah, just a couple, hi Kevin, thank you.
Hello.
You do an amazing job at the country club and managing this enterprise fund but just curious, um I see a reduction in the seasonal personnel, what's what's the rationale for that?
The overall, I think we we have gone up a little bit so one of the things that the the um if you look at the overall budget for the payroll, there's some ups and downs, we have eliminated the the bowling alley full-time position and we have increased some of our line items, not significantly but we have increased some of the seasonal line items by ten to fifteen thousand for the pro shop and for the uh for the maintenance staff but we have decreased the bowling alley um line item for payroll so overall I think you know our our payroll is just coming up pretty much with the um with the seasonal increase or the annual increases that the uh personnel would provide to my staff.
Okay.
And then you know we have increased up a little bit just for for staffing for um raises for the seasonal three percent for the uh raises for the seasonal as well. The only thing that did decline would be like the bowling alley line item did decline a little bit.
Okay.
If I could just add to that Kevin, I think this is also a little bit of a minus switch where um on the very first sheet if you're looking at this, we we bumped or pulled out the second assistant golf course.
Right.
Superintendent.
Oh yeah.
They were included as seasonal but they should have been permanent so.
Okay.
That's right.
So the one twenty-seven is was pulled down, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, hold on a second.
No, that's okay, thank you for clarifying um and just a question about the restaurant, um remind me about that agreement and how that kind that offsets the costs for the expenses here at the eighty-nine thousand.
Yeah, so the the restaurant pays us uh per lease eight thousand dollars per month at the level it um we were in our fourth year of a five-year extension, there's one five-year extension that's still available for the restaurant um so they're in process of they pay like you said eight thousand dollars a month or staying six thousand dollars a fiscal year and then what we do is we have the line item in there for the restaurant and they and that's for all the billing so we what we do is in per the agreement, we pay all the um utilities for the uh for the restaurant and for the function spaces and then we build them back on a monthly basis so it's kind of that line item on the restaurant is really kind of a wash in the end, we count it as revenue um as it comes in for the restaurant but it's really we also can already incur the expenses for those for the uh you know for the you know gas, for the electricity and all that because we pay that per lease and then they they reimburse us back.
Got it, okay, thank you, no other questions.
Joe.
Kevin, uh thank you for the presentation, um I assumed you had to participate by Zoom because you're at the golf course in place, I know it's a little chilly but um so your your total sixty-six oh one costs are up twenty-two percent um and I as you said, most of it is attributed to the debt service, uh both principal and interest.
Correct.
But with that increase, you're you're still within your your budget for an enterprise fund?
Yes, absolutely, I think you know as as I've always said, if you know one of the things I think we've done a good job in the last you know four years is we really manage um you know I definitely manage our expenses too on our revenues are to ensure that we do have um a profitability and maintain our margins and you know we've been pretty good at that the last several years and we'll continue to do that to ensure that uh you know we're not a uh you know that that we're self-sufficient.
Yep, well, I got no other questions, I really think outstanding job to you and your team, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any questions from the public about the South Shore Country Club budget?
Just Mike.
Yep, go ahead, you want to add something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to also you know I gave a miss like and um thank you know Chris Riley and Mike Levy, Chris Riley's the golf professional at the country club, they've all do a great job managing you know the day-to-day and the pro shop and I really appreciate all their references as well as the uh country club management committee for their guidance as well.
Kevin, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Not not seen any questions, we will move to the next budget item, Kevin, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Shrek budget, Tom, you can take us for this?
Sure, this will be a brief one, so uh this is the regional nine-one-one dispatch services, um the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, otherwise known as Shrek. Um so they sit here at two-ten Central Street in Hingham, Town Hall, they serve uh Norwell, Hull, Cohasset and Hingham, uh those are the four towns that are served by the by the Shrek, um it's a budget um to Hingham of approximately one million forty thousand dollars is our um our assessment, it's based on call a combination of call volume and um and population so uh so that's the way that's calculated but our hit is about a million dollars, they do a lot of great work, they're they're the first, think of the the nine-one-one center as the first point of contact for all the emergencies in town, uh these folks do uh they're they're there twenty-four seven and they do terrific work. Um so they're run nowadays by their executive director is Aaron Smith, um he's been in that role now for almost going on two years uh and he's done he's been doing a fantastic job, they receive about twenty-eight thousand calls a year, um they're a twenty-four seven operation like I said, um anyway, I think I think that's the it's an annual uh increase at the budgeting time of about five percent, their their budgeting effort will in uh in in earnest will begin starting in January, so about a month from now is when we'll get our first preliminary budget from them, so what we do every year is we anticipate a five percent increase, um I've been told that the five percent will be more than enough for any increases that come through the budget process, so it won't be more than this, it will likely be something less, if we can perfect it at the end of the year, if we know enough, we will, otherwise it ends up as a turnback.
Thank you, Tom, Joe, any questions?
Tom, do you just want to comment briefly on the audit situation with the.
Sure, yeah, thank you, so our audit committee here in Hingham had been had been suggesting for many years that uh that the Shrek needed to do its own audit, um it hadn't done one since its inception, it needed to uh and the myself and the other directors, the town managers of each town are together the board of directors for the Shrek, um have agreed to that, funded it in last year's budget and it's currently underway, well, it will be underway beginning in January first.
Great, thank you, no other questions.
Liz, any questions?
Can you just remind me, Tom, is is our what we pay, is it based literally on the number of calls or does Hingham have a percentage share?
It's a it's a combination formula of the number of number of calls and population, I don't forget the exact formula but it's a combination of both.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, we are by far the largest community, obviously, yeah.
Any questions from the public about the Shrek budget? All right, seeing none, um I'm gonna go back to item four on our agenda because I do see Ann Smith White has joined us, um item four is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to WM Brewing Company Incorporated for the New Year's Bonfire to be held on Saturday, January seventh, twenty-twenty-three with a rain date of Sunday, January eighth, twenty-twenty-three from five PM to eight PM, Ann, good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, tell us about your application.
Um so we are, this is our annual bonfire, we did it last year, we're looking forward to doing it again um Saturday night after New Year's, um five to eight PM, we're looking to sell about three hundred tickets, we're hoping for nice cold weather but not a ton of snow, um we I talked with the um fire chief, we're all set for um to have a duty with two fire um firefighters on hand, um we'll have a food truck and Widowmaker will be in attendance as well here at the brewery.
Excellent, um Tom, is the police chief, fire chief have okayed this application?
Both chiefs are good with it, this is a repeat um a repeat program, yep, and both chiefs are good with it.
Liz, any questions?
No questions or concerns, thank you.
Joe.
No questions, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to WM Brewing Company Incorporated for the New Year's Bonfire to be held on Saturday, January seventh, twenty-twenty-three with a rain date of Sunday, January eighth, twenty-twenty-three from five PM to eight PM.
Second.
All of the favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm in eyes while the motion carries, Ann, good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy holidays.
All right, um uh uh agenda item five, obviously the applicant is not with us this evening, um how do you do you want to hold this over and do you want to proceed on it? Joe, what do you think?
Tom, is everything in order for this?
So everything is, it's a repeat event, um however, I did clear uh with um Sharon just before she left that this this event is technically after your next meeting so you could take this up on the third if you wanted to but she did say it's a repeat event and the chief is fine with it, so if you want to hear from the applicant, we can do it on the third.
Liz, what do you think?
I don't have any concerns, I know we reviewed it last year um and the police chief has signed off on it, correct? Yes, so I'm fine with doing it tonight.
Proceed on it, Joe, what do you think?
Yeah, I I agree with Liz.
Okay, um let me just read the agenda item into the record so it's clear, um agenda item five is to consider approval of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Incorporated for a night of music with Chelsea Berry and Matt Cusson to be held at Ames Chapel on January seventh, twenty-twenty-three from seven PM to ten PM, obviously the board has no um additional questions on this item. Do any members of the public have any questions on this agenda item? All right, if you're comfortable proceeding, then I would take a motion.
And I do note that there is no rain date associated with this.
Correct.
Yep, so with that, I will uh make a motion to issue, make sure I'm doing the right one, um to approve the issuance of a special one-day malt wine and malt beverages license to Friends of Hingham Cemetery Inc. for a night of music with Chelsea Berry and Matt Cusson to be held at Ames Chapel on Saturday, January seven, twenty-twenty-three from seven PM to ten PM.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm in eyes while the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is to consider approval of a donation of a certain property at twenty-two Abington to the Conservation Commission, we have Lonnie Fornier with us. Good evening Lonnie, good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for patiently waiting in the audience.
Of course, and I'm going to magically transfer my GIS powers to art, I think, I can put a map up on the screen, um and a thank you to Bob Devon as well who's in the audience and representing the property owner here tonight, um so the quick rundown on twenty-two Abington Street is that we started talking about this donation back in twenty-twenty, believe it or not, um the parcel is largely undevelopable, uh mostly because of the wetlands that you can potentially make out on screen, um they are configured in an inconvenient way for development, um and the Conservation Commission has a a protective fifty-foot buffer zone around wetlands and largely likes to see that protected, uh i.e. undeveloped, especially in cases where it is currently undeveloped, so they do make exceptions where um there's already development in the fifty-foot buffer, uh but in this case, um it is in good condition for our purposes, so approximately forty percent of the lot is wet, when you add the fifty-foot buffer to that, it's it totals ninety-six percent of the lot, there's also a certified vernal pool that is conveniently yet inconveniently located right near the front edge, the Conservation Commission has a hundred-foot protective buffer around that as well, um adjacent to the property, we have commercial and industrial uses to the south and west, uh there is vacant land that's zoned industrial park to the east and some residential land across the street uh to the north at Abington Street is the locus here, um this is towards the Rockland Street end or the sorry, Rockland end of Abington Street, um the Conservation Commission owns another property known as Old Swamp River Conservation Area, it's about a quarter of a mile towards the Waymouth end of Abington Street, so up the street as we're looking at the map, um the property owner uh has owned this for several decades, uh first via a trust and now is the sole property owner for it, uh over the years that has been recognized as undeveloped, he has tried to find a different or an interested owner, uh can someone else take it, I have no use for it, um so he's done some great due diligence there, making sure that there was no one else that's interested and no one was, uh the Conservation Commission with their protective wetlands um mission and having the conservation property up the street seemed like the best fit for this particular property, um and the owner also went above and beyond uh in terms of our usual gift scenario and that they did the title research or they covered the title research themselves, uh and they also hired a professional to conduct the phase one environmental site assessment, uh that came back clean, the property has been undeveloped its entire life as far as we can tell, uh and no risk of contamination and those two items are of particular importance when it comes to consider gifts, we want to make sure that the title's in order and that the site is clean, uh in terms of potential lost revenue, generally the taxes on this property are about three thousand dollars a year, um and the assessed value for this fiscal year was just under three hundred thousand dollars, um the Open Space Acquisition Committee first vetted this gift, they are in favor of us accepting it and the Conservation Commission is also in favor uh due to the wildlife habitat, some water quality protection values and its recharge recharge capacity, um this wetland complex is adjacent to um Old Swamp River which if I'm not mistaken contributes to Waymouth's water supply sort of tangentially, so there is some benefits to our neighboring communities through accepting this and protecting it as well, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Lonnie, thank you, I know that we have attorney Bob Devon with us tonight who represents the applicant, Bob, do you want to add anything to Lonnie's presentation?
No.
And if you do, just go up to the mic, if you don't, that's fine, but it but I know that you know you bill by the hour so I figured. you know, you bill by the hour, so I figured he might.
No, I, I think Lonnie has summarized the thing very well.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Good to see you again. Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, so the, the lost tax revenue would be about $3,000. Is that correct? Okay. But the assessed value is almost 300.
Yes.
But you can't, the land is undevelopable, correct? I mean, if they're within the, if you win, if you're within 100 feet of the wetland, they need a variance to build on that, right? And 50 feet.
They would need a permit, yeah.
And 50 feet, you guys don't grant.
Not on an undeveloped parcel like this. It would be a very difficult road ahead. Emily Rettworth also contributed to some of the zoning analysis that was in your memo and she came to the same conclusion that based on zoning, wetland, and some Board of Health regulations, there are some potable wells in the area where this part of town would be on septic and having the setbacks from those wells would make further development on this lot more challenging. It just seems like it's a really, really tough road ahead.
Okay.
Especially for a commercial or industrial use, which is what it's zoned as.
Joe, do you have any questions?
I do. But first, thanks for the work here. This is very important. You know, when I was on the Conservation Commission, we were getting donations of land on Main Street. Now you're, where are you? I don't know what's, what's going on here. So other than the lost tax revenue, are there any costs to the town? For example, maintenance of the property, anything you can think of that there would be annual recurring costs to the town?
I don't think so. I, I don't envision this becoming the next best sort of open space destination for residents or visitors. At worst, we're looking at some roadside litter cleanup that can be accomplished at the same time that we're down at the Old Swamp River parcel. So no, I don't see improvements coming in here. I don't see, fingers crossed, a lot of, you know, vandalism or expansion or, you know, incredible use by the public. It's, it's very wet, hard traverse. So I think in and of itself, it will sort of deter people from exploring. So no, I, I don't think it will cost much.
And that was really my next question, which is, to what extent is there public access to this parcel and is it likely to be utilized? I'm hearing it's unlikely to be utilized, but.
I think parking and access are challenging. We face the same challenges with the Old Swamp River parcel and that you sort of, when I've gone to, you know, check on the property and do some litter pickup, you park on the shoulder of Abington, which is narrow. And drivers on Abington Street tend to go at a pretty good clip. And so it's, it's not welcoming to be there. We do have a kiosk and a sign at the Old Swamp River parcel. It's open to hunting as well. Deer and turkey only, with a permit for anyone listening. With a permit from the office, don't just head down there. So it, it's challenging. It's in a fairly remote portion of town that's mostly industrial. Parking is a challenge. And for this particular parcel, I just don't see a lot of people visiting it.
Yep. And, you know, the biggest concern from my perspective is we don't want to be taking ownership to a super fund site, but you've, you've done that.
We've made sure that's not the case.
Okay, great. No, no other questions. Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Can you just tell us what's number 28 on the map? Do you know what that?
All right, would you mind clicking Identify and seeing what the owner is?
And I know you said that there was, it sounds like there was a fair amount of due diligence. I'm assuming, or contacting the abutters part of that process?
In terms of whether or not they'd be interested in the acquisition, I believe the property owner did that as sort of his due diligence to make sure that no one else was out there that wanted it.
But I think Liz.
That's a trust. That's not very helpful.
There's no requirement that abutters be notified as you would in a permitting process.
Correct. So the, the act of the gift coming to us doesn't need a butter or doesn't require a butter, a butter notification. But if I remember correctly from several years ago, there was the concerted effort to make sure that abutters weren't interested first, right? They would likely be the most interested. After that, I, I know for a fact that the land trust was contacted, are you interested? They don't really have anything in the area, even remotely. And so then next it came to us and said, would you be interested?
Okay.
I'd like to note also on a positive note that the property owner has been paying his taxes all these years. Typically, property owners might get frustrated with the fact that they can't develop their land and yet they're still being assessed taxes. And so the property owner here has really been upstanding in the fact that the recognizes sort of the challenges ahead, but has stayed fair and on the books and upfront with us as part of the process. And that has alleviated a lot of the complications that could have come with this gift.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for preparing this memo. It's very helpful to see not only the due diligence that you went through, but also the tax value. And it's good to hear there's not ongoing maintenance as well, so.
I do have one other question. Assuming that the board does vote to accept this property, would it be your practice to send a note of thanks and acknowledgement to the owner so that we, this is not, this is not a trivial event. I mean, making a gift to the town is important and should, should be acknowledged.
I can absolutely do that. I think they will be thrilled after two years just to know that it's actually happening. But yes, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Devon. Thrilled. It's been a long road.
If I may, Liz, I believe that's a landscaping business, at 28.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna, I was, I was gonna say it's probably a storage of some facility, yeah, because it's up on Abington Street. And the size of the building looks like it might be something of that nature.
It seems like the access might also be off of Sharp, not Abington. And so it's, it would be tucked back quite a ways from both of those roads in case you're trying to place it in your mind. Actually, no. They come in off Abington.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? Right, seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the acceptance by the Conservation Commission pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8(c) of a deed of the property known as 22 Abington Street for conservation purposes.
Second. All of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries. Lonnie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob, let's see again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the 2023 common victual license renewals. Any questions on this agenda item, Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
Joe?
I've reviewed the list. No questions.
Any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? Should I take a motion?
I move to approve the renewal of the common victual licenses as presented for calendar year 2023.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the 2023 limousine license renewals. Joe, any questions about this agenda item?
No.
Liz?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I take a motion?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the limousine license as presented for calendar year 2023.
Second. All of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointments. I don't believe we have any appointments this evening.
Nope.
Then we will go to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, I turn to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Let's start with Art this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to share this evening an update with regard to our sustainability coordinator. We actually have a new person on board, Virginia Leclerc. She started about two weeks ago now. She's making the rounds, getting acquainted with the different boards, committees, and departments that have interests, needs, and aspirations with regard to sustainability. We'll be putting together a plan together and she'll be hard at work in the near future. You know, one potential project that you heard Kevin Whalen talk about tonight, the idea of getting PV solar array on the maintenance building. A lot of folks are interested in getting something like that moving forward and she'll, she'll be working on that for us.
But if I just piggyback on that, she's, this is a fully grant-funded position that is, she's partially covering the town of Cohasset as well as Hingham.
Sure.
And Art's been managing this whole effort.
Great job, Art. It's good that we got that, got her on board and now she's starting to work. That's great. Michelle, anything?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Tom?
Not tonight, thanks.
All right. Go to Liz.
Nothing to report.
Joe?
Just briefly, on Sunday evening, there was a Hanukkah event at the Hingham Shipyard, supported by the Fire Department. And then an hour later, there was another Hanukkah event at the synagogue up on Main Street, also supported by the Fire Department, doing, throwing money, not money, throwing candy from the tops of fire trucks to the kids below. It was really greatly appreciated. So happy Hanukkah to everyone.
Yes, happy Hanukkah. We have a menorah lighting tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Yes.
At 5:00 o'clock at the Talbot Salon.
That's great.
Yet another lighting. Okay.
All right, everybody. Well, this is going to be our last meeting for 2022. I just want to note this has been very busy and a tremendous year for the town. Obviously, two of the bigger highlights were the, the approval of the new foster school funding and the approval for the funding for a public safety building. But we also had, you know, a wonderful town meeting in the spring. And just a lot of great things happened this past year. So I'm very thankful for my colleagues, thankful for the staff, Tom, Art, Michelle as well. 23 is not going to slow down at all. We're going to have a busy year in 23 and we'll have a lot of challenges facing us. We'll have a lot of difficult decisions that we have, as a community, have to make regarding our budget and some other, some other items. But as we always do, we'll get through them because we get through them together. And after we debate items and we discuss them, and we always seem to come to the right conclusion in Hingham. So looking forward to the year ahead. I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Everybody, happy holidays. We'll see you in 23.
Thank you. Happy holidays.